This conference will now be recorded.
All right, good evening and welcome to the Alpine City Council meeting of September 20th, 2021. All the orders please.
Mayor Proton Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell.
Here.
Councilman Noah.
Here.
Councilman Osmer.
Here.
And Mayor Walagora.
Here.
Please raise your hands. But the budget is to the United States of America and to the United States of China. One nation under God and the law of liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Proton Johnson. Councilman Mitchell.
Yes.
Councilman Noah.
Yes.
Councilman Osmer. And Mayor Walagora. Motion carried.
Our questions. Approval of minutes for regular and closed sessions of September 7th, 2021 and special session of September 9th, 2021. Any issues or changes? Since this period before council on agenda none, agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns as they were timed this evening that you are allowed to address council if you'd like to do so. And you're present at our meeting, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records and then we'll check the virtual. Anyone here? Apparently there's no space. There's no public hearing tonight, so next up is the consent agenda. A, those to be allowed in an amount of $264,286.39. B is mayoral reappointment of Joanna Cooper to the downtown development authority for a four-year term expiring on September 20th, 2025. And C is approval of a noise ordinance variance for the duration of the overnight valve replacement project at Chisholm Street and Second. We approve the consent agenda presented.
Councilman Mitchell.
Yes.
Councilman Noah.
Yes.
Councilman Osmer.
Yes.
Mayor Walagora. And Mayor Proton Johnson. Motion carried.
Now we have a couple of conclusions. The first one is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas October 2021 is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month is a platform for educating women about the importance of early detection of breast cancer through mammography and other methods. And whereas an estimated 281,550 new cases of breast cancer will be diagnosed in American women during 2021. And about 43,600 women will die this year from the disease. And whereas detection of breast cancer at an early stage greatly improves the chances for successful treatment and survival. Whereas the Zanta Club of Alpine remains dedicated to educating and empowering women to take charge of their own breast health and have organized the 15th Annual Zanta Walks for Women 5K Walk, 5K South Walk for Saturday, October 2nd, 2021. Now then, we're Matthew J. Walagora by the virtue of authority vested in the city of Alpine to be hereby proclaim October 2021 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Alpine and encourage all area citizens to take heart and be aware of this occasion in our community. We have several guests from the Zanta, the communities.
Rachel's number two. And I'll note that our city manager, Rachel, is the honorary chairman of the event this this year.
Thank you so much. Honored to do it. Thank you.
I write that, I can't tell. There's always somebody.
One more quick phone so we can, they can take a picture with us. Thank you so much. Do you want to take that too?
Yep. Thank you. Thank you. On October 2nd.
And our next proclamation is for the Thunder Bay Folk Festival Week. Whereas the nonprofit Thunder Bay Folk Society was started in 2015 for the purpose of fostering traditional music and arts in northeast Michigan. And whereas this will be the 7th annual Thunder Bay Folk Festival. Whereas successful fundraisers, festivals, workshops, parade floats and community performances have then helped promote awareness and support for traditional music and arts. And the upcoming Folk Festival is at the Alpine Antique Tractor Showgrounds. And whereas this year's festival will be held on September 24th and 25th, 2021. Now therefore, I'm Matthew J. Walagora by the virtue of authority vested in the city of Alpine to be hereby proclaim September 24th and 25th, 2021 as Thunder Bay Folk Festival Week in Alpine. And urge all area citizens to recognize and support the efforts of the Thunder Bay Folk Society. We have Martin Hennington and a couple other guests.
You're the president of the board? And your name is?
Bonnie.
Bonnie, okay. We're not delayed in time.
Oh. Sophie. Oh. It's okay. This one? Great.
Awesome. Thank you.
In report of officers, we have the Hope Network pilot for vacant school and Rachel.
Any of everyone? Okay, so I just wanted to note that we do have a member of Hope Network. If you could introduce yourself in the audience to answer questions. Is it even?
Yes, my name's Alan Faisonfield. I'm a project analyst at Hope Network and I'm happy to be here.
And I believe we have two representatives online as well. If you wanted to introduce yourselves.
Sure. My name is Nathan Treff and Director of Business for Housing and Community Development at Hope Network.
Okay, was that it? All right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So Hope Network, a nonprofit based out of Grand Rapids, has requested to remodel and add on to the vacant building, former Bingham School located at 555 West Fifth Avenue. As part of this request, their subsidiary, Bingham Limited Dividend Housing Association Association Limited Partnership, has requested a pilot or a payment in lieu of taxes. The proposed development would consist of 35 units reserved for income restricted independent senior living. The proposed project would rely on the use of low-income housing tax credits, which require the establishment to obtain a pilot to provide assurance that the tax burden will remain in line with the income and affordable nature of the proposed development for the life of the loan. In this case, it's 40 years. The pilot ordinance would restrict the primary residence to 55 years of age or older and allow them to have someone else living with them that could be 50 years of age or older. Any units containing someone that does not meet the age or income requirements would be taxed at the full amount of ad valorem taxes. Previously, a pilot was approved in 2019 and that was an annual service charge in lieu of taxes at 10% of the actual rents collected less utilities. Unfortunately, the project was delayed in 2020 because of the pandemic. And therefore, the pilot expired in January of 2021. So now that Hope Network has come back, they are stating that their additional construction cost will be $586,360. And if the pilot is reduced, the developer can afford a higher debt payments and additional debt and therefore close the financial gap on the project. So the proposed pilots in front of you is 4% of the annual shelter rents less the cost of furnished utilities and will continue over the term of the financing and Misha, Misha regulatory oversight of 40 years. At 4%, the expected annual pilot is calculated at 8,460 by the applicants, roughly 30%, of which 2,538 of that amount would remain at the city. While the other 70% would go to other taxing jurisdictions. The applicant has estimated the total project cost at 8.251 million, of which 5.492 million represents hard construction costs and the remainder includes items such as property acquisition, 10% construction contingency, professional services, financing costs and various reserves required by Misha. The applicant estimates the taxable value to be 4.125 million. The ad valorem tax for that taxable value is calculated at 237,989. So as noted in 2019, city staff is often cautious of these types of developments that require a pilot. However, this, this is, or this particular property, there really wasn't a tax base previously. So that's something that the staff initially in 2019 was in favor of and still is for this project. I'm not going to read that entire paragraph, but there's a reasoning behind there and why this property is good for, for a pilot. So the proposed 8.251 million investment in this development will provide work for local contractors and improve, and improve the overall quality and quantity of low to moderate housing stock available to seniors in the city and of Alpine. Although the development will be tax exempt, it is the intent of the federal government and Misha for them to remain so, so long as there is a need for low to moderate income housing within the city. Based on census data and anecdotal information from the city's rental programs, it is apparent that the demand for such housing is still present and will continue to increase for this foreseeable future. So therefore, staff supports the rehabilitation of 35 rental housing units by Bingham Limited Dividend Housing Association Limited Partnership and the approval of a new 4% pilot covering the development as part of the firm's LIHTC application. If the council concerns or concurs, then we will move forward with developing an ordinance. That would be very much like the last one unless you want any changes. Again, I wanted to get your concurents or your thoughts on a 4% pilot and open it up to council.
I have a few questions. So I think that this is a good project. I think it's, you know, it's in my neighborhood. I think that's a perfect use of the building. I do have some concerns of going from a 10% pilot to a 4%. And I have a couple of questions because to me it's not clear. It says that the 4% would be the shelter rents less the cost of furnished utilities. So will the 2,538 that the city will be getting, is that what we would actually be getting? Or we still have to deduct utilities from that?
But now that was stated, I would be, not be, would be getting. Less utility deduction.
And if we were to do this and do ordinance, any ordinance, I would like, and I don't have the authority to see what's going to be. But I would like that the pilot ends with the property that's transferred or sold. A second surcharge, it's not like, that's a surcharge, not a tax. So each resident still has to pay on that. And it says in here that, is the work going to be bid out to local contractors only?
Uh, no. And we'll try and get as many local contractors as we can. The project, general contractor for this project is Rhodey Construction Grand Rapids. And they are, they're not going to want people to travel all the way from Grand Rapids here. So, you know, they're, they're going to try and get as, source as much as they can.
And I understand, and I understand the price of construction material because it has, also the city has to infer as well in reaching projects. Prices are starting to come down a little bit. So if at the time of the building, they may even be, so to ask, and this is just me to ask, is it going to go from 10% to 4%?
Yeah, a lot of the same questions, you know? And thank you so much for having us. I think the same thing is that, you know, what I looked at mainly was construction cost and manufacturing and a little bit of that business myself. And there are certain signals, cost come down and they are going to down at least a year at least, that's what the projections are. So I too would probably reiterate, Mayor Proton said that, you know, going from 10 to six, we're willing to help out. I just don't know if we're able to make that jump, you know? We are talking though, when you start getting the percentage, I think if you figure if you went up to six or seven, it's not a big amount, but you know, over 40 years, you know, it does have an tendency to add on our responsibility purposes to ensure that we're taking care of the citizens for all services and to make sure that we're covering the services that those units are going to require.
I'll hop in there real quick before I lose my train of thought. I wanted to jump a little bit towards the graphic. We do have a graphic of the, of the layout plan and it looks significantly different than before. It's way down, it's way down, like beyond the notes. I'm not sure if they're.
I don't know if that's, that wasn't in the public packet.
So it, so my question is, if the, if it's a 35, 35 units, is that significantly lower? It seems as though you were going to add on to the building and almost make it an L shape. So there's a lot of, there was a lot of issues in the neighborhood about parking. Now it looks like there's parking lots on both sides of the building. And it, and it says lot one, lot two, lot three, lot four in the back, doesn't it? So, so do you know that the, the construction and what you were going to rehab become significantly smaller? Or am I thinking of some different project?
But the, the addition to the building was kind of moved to the center and that was part of the historic apartments because they wanted to make sure that the, the new addition didn't really dominate and that it appearance looked the same. And also, we did take a couple of two-bedroom units and convert them into one-bedroom units. And that was basically to work with the demographics of the people who would be in this building. It's hard to find a lot of seniors who are looking for two-bedroom apartments. That wasn't a major change, but that was at the strength of the footprint of the building.
But you're, so I'm sorry, I, so are you, are you going to add on to the building at all or is it just going to stay?
Yes, there will be an addition. It'll just be a little bit smaller and it'll be kind of centered in the back of the building. So it won't be really, it won't be stand out like it was before. You know, you'll see the historic buildings and the addition will be back where it won't be so as of Austin Street.
Danny, if you want to. But according on to the, the 4% and being, oh, I was looking more at 5%. It's still not likely a lot, but to go from 10 down to four is kind of a low situation. But considering there's not too many places here in the city to build something like this, I encourage the use of the properties like this for that kind of need that we have in the city. So I don't want to get on that, but a few percentage points, because it may jeopardize the project itself, so.
If my memory serves me correct, we do have another pilot that we get 10% of rent in Texas.
That was, that was not, yeah, that was mentioned as part of the village. Sorry, I wasn't going to just not really, the project was, if you can figure, all new construction. It was a village, it initially got a lot more clients. And it was many years ago, so I just tried not to use that shit much of an example, I suppose, because I'm not sure it was really.
And that's one thing from Barker, I've been stated that Hope's 4% pilot is also higher than the 3% paid by the Alpine Village Senior House. It says 3%.
I'd have to check on that.
Yeah, the actual, I mean, the actual numbers would be the same. The vastness of the, of the book. So I don't know, but to be fair, to compare, much about that. Jesse, do you have any questions or comments? I have a, okay. So I, to be honest with you, I'm not really sure where, where to correct. I like the product, but I am concerned about going that low. Maybe with just a little bit more time. What's our timeline here?
We're trying to get all of our, all of our costs together and our bids done by maybe mid-October. And we really need to get our numbers finalized by then so we can work with our financing companies to, to really do our due diligence and prepare them for proposing this project.
Maybe a little more explanation on how you came up with the 4% and, and your reasoning behind that. I can actually come up here and say it can be heard a little bit better. But, you know, just that justify the 4% and maybe that'll give a little more basis.
Sure. Well, the 4% is kind of an industry minimum. And really, we were just trying to find a way to get this project. You know, the, the, we had two things simultaneously. Construction costs went up and the cost of tax credits, which is our primary way of financing the project, is my way down. That's come up since, but the project was kind of in jeopardy for a while. And we were, we were trying to figure everything that we could possibly do to make it work with the grants. You know, so we're, we're, I think we're, we could negotiate a little bit, but the, the project is based into strong headwinds financially. So that was the basis of why we were asking for a lower pilot.
It doesn't work. It didn't work. Yeah, I guess my, I guess my biggest issue is that I can't do all this math in my head. And so, I mean, we have the math for 4%. And if Danny suggests 5%, I just absolutely no idea whether that even makes a significant difference. So, so maybe, let me, let me suggest this. We all, we all like the problem. We didn't, that would see the project, we kind of went over that several meetings ago. Can we, can we get like a proposed, I don't know what that's been all about, maybe, can we get a proposed resolution to get over that? That has, and then maybe by the, by the first October meeting, have, you know, some numbers to say, okay, well, this is what 10% was to the city. This is, now we know what 4% is, can we just give something maybe in the middle there so we can kind of take a look?
It does.
All we got to do is, you know, include the numbers in and then approve the resolution. Is everything else in the resolution be the same on the, the numbers are looking? Does that make sense or is that?
No, it's nuts. It isn't. Wouldn't be recreating the wheel because we aren't, this, you know, maybe, see if we have a different, we have a different number than one bit.
I'm just going to give us some ideas. I'm not sure if we guys have, yeah, absolutely. I don't know if you do. Well, there you go. You come all the way around Grand Rapids.
I did, I took a walk around the city this afternoon.
Great.
Welcome. We appreciate you covering all this way. And I think that might work best for us too. That way, and you can send that, obviously. We can get that in advance in the next meetings and we should, I can just take a look and see. Because if these percentages really aren't, you know, sometimes I'd say 5% and you find out it's only, it's only talking about $1,500. Yeah, for 40 years.
So would you like 4, 4 through 10% basically?
Yeah. I don't know.
Okay.
I can do that.
Okay.
You can do that.
Can we comment?
Yeah, please.
21. Can I come, can I comment for a second?
Yes. And you are?
This, I'm Anthony Barker. I'm the Executive Director of Hope Networks Housing and Community Development. So the performance we have right now, the reason we're at 4% is because no matter how we did the numbers, with the increased cost, that's basically the most this job will carry in order to get it through financing. So the higher the number goes, the less likely that this is going to work. That's how we came up with the 4%.
Okay.
And, and our timing is this, we, in order to, we're on a real tight schedule because in order to get the financing finished, in order to get the constructions numbers solid enough that we can assure we have enough financing, we have to be able to show that the pilot works and then that the, we can then bring down some of the costs for the, for the materials and stuff so we can get it into, out in the field to get the, the bids in so we can close it mid, toward the end of, end of November and actually go into construction mid-December. If we miss the December date, we're in jeopardy of losing the project.
So, so if I understand you correctly, that 4% is what's going to get this project going, so are you going to come back and suggest any other percentage is going to work for you?
Yeah, we don't, it's not going, we can play with the numbers, but it's not going to work. That's why we're at this number. It would have worked if we, if, if we didn't have the increasing cost, even with that, it was, it was a large number for us. But once we got to over a million, almost a million dollars in additional cost, you can't make it work because we can't charge enough rents to bring the numbers up. It just doesn't work.
Did I misunderstand, but you don't even have all your votes in yet, right?
We have, where we're at is, we have almost got our architectural work done and we should be going out for bids next week.
Your architectural cost, that's where you got your estimates based on? You had to go up with way, you estimated 583,000 and I'm assuming that's from your architect going based on current data.
Our architect looked at, our architect did some very preliminary drawings in our Our architect, um, looked at, our architect did some very preliminary drawings in our contractor. Did a cost estimate based on historical experience that they've had. But that's where the cost estimates came from.
And to give us a little background, your cost estimates versus your project, actual projects usually come in at settings less from a standard bracket.
Their cost estimates are less.
Do they, when you do an actual project, they're usually a little bit?
Um, it, it depends on the, the environment. You know, that's what I've been hoping for. But, uh, you know, with, with prices, the way they happen, it's, it's not guaranteed.
Yeah. So. I'm sent in for something historically, just to kind of give a little bit more information about. You know, we're, we're trying to, we're trying to help you out here, but we're trying to understand where your, where your historical projects have come in, you know, based on this. And I understand that there's been a lot, you know, other projects and there's a difference between, but when we work with our engineering staff, sometimes the projects will come in a little bit higher, not as much as, you know, 15, 20% less than what we have. Because we have to make them when we got an actual bid coming in, it comes in less because people.
That's what we're hoping for.
Yeah.
So I, I mean, to say early on, just say, hey, we're locked in and we can't do 4%. We're not going to get the project. It's kind of early to make that assessment.
And I, we can get into the numbers. It actually does because of the modeling we've done with our equity financing. So we do need to work into that. So we can get you some numbers. It sounds like we need to, but Tony, go ahead.
No, go ahead. I was just going to say that I, if anything, what we've been finding right now is costs have been going up and that's been the problem. We've been trying to push them down as much as we can. But to make the numbers actually work right now, there's not a, a lot of play in those numbers. I mean, we're probably going to find more cuts than this.
Correct. This is the top level. We do need to make cuts, but we're working with the scope we have. So, yeah, what you're seeing is a budget that's set with equity financing and we're working down versus I think what we're talking about, which is working up.
And I suggest that, you know, maybe if we, if council still wants to see those numbers, um, you could send those in between the next meeting. Because regardless of what comes out of this meeting, we still have to do the first reading of the ordinance if it's approved next time. So at least council will have that information ahead of time and a decision can be made at the October 4th meeting where there would be the first reading.
What does, so all, so these are anticipated costs. Like you say, that they're extremely realistic for right now.
Yeah.
We approve it, project moves forward. Break ground, get some things done. And then by the time that is actual building structure happening, the cost, I'm going to, I'm going to use that word loosely back to where they were before or, or very close. So now there's a, now there's a big gap between what you expected the property to be and what the costs actually are. Where, where does that difference go? Who is, who is suited by that? Because we wouldn't be able to go back then and say, hey, let's pump it back up 10% so it didn't drop back down to where it was. So, but so once we, you know, we lock into 4% for 40 years and there's a significant difference in the material costs from the plan to what actually occurred, what happened with money that's generated?
I've, we, we've never generated more than what we, what we've contracted. I mean, these budgets are very tight. We'll lock in and once we get this done, when we, when we lock into contracts, uh, they're going to be for the dollar amounts that we've, we've negotiated, which will happen, we have a hundred days before, or less before we have to go into construction. Yeah. So we're going to lock into contracts with folks. When we get a number that makes sense, that'll be a contract number we'll be agreed upon with them. There, there is no savings and hopefully there is no increases because we've locked in.
Okay. Yeah, so you'll just pay off your contractors what you contract to pay them there.
Yeah, we'll pay what, what we agree to.
That's for sure. Because your costs are going to be your costs.
And, and that's why we're working toward this. We're working with everybody saying, you know, we need help from, from the good folks and, and helping, you know? We need help from the contractors we're working with, uh, all the partners involved. We're throwing in extra that we have to try to make this work. But the, this, this deal is, is more difficult now than it's ever been before. It's simply because of, uh, uh, the experience of, uh, of the, uh, environment we're in right now.
Danny, I guess Rachel's suggestion is probably the best one, but I guess we'll have to, we're just, I kind of like to know, I guess. But I understand, you're saying either 4% or the project's not going to work. But maybe that, maybe that would just be helpful information, you know, something like that. Kind of, we'll go with that. And then they'll be ready to, wait, I, I guess, under the circumstances, you might as well be ready for 4%. From, uh, October 1st, whether it's going, I don't see a call.
Okay.
If that makes sense, everything. Okay. All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Yep.
I'll be, when we were going to, yeah, there's no real, we'll get to recover it.
I like it.
That's what you want to be sure. All right. We have one item of new business. This is resolution 2021-17. Notice of filing role for public inspection and notice of public hearing for 2019 special assessment project number 124. And Ellenberger accessories on the line. I see.
Yes, hello. Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a little bit unusual to join you guys, um, outside of Board of Review. So, uh, the reason I'm here today is that city charter requires myself as city assessor to present the special assessment role. So this special assessment project was actually started and initiated in 2019. It's on Merchant Street between Millin and Lake. And, um, it's, I, it appears that my role per charter and through this process is to ensure the levy is properly calculated and spread among the parcels in the district. Uh, back in 2019 of July, the city manager had, uh, and the council had approved the determination of necessity and that calls for a levy to be collected by the taxpayers of $6,933.08 to be spread and collected on five years. As I indicated, the special assessment calculation was initially discussed and prepared back in 2019. Uh, I was asked to cal, uh, verify the amount of frontage. Uh, engineering provided the exempt frontage and we calculated the assessable frontage pursuant to the city charter. Uh, then a special assessment role was created by the city treasurer, which was in your packet, I believe. And the values were spread on the roll. That 6,900 and change was spread on the roll. I validated those calculations. Everything appears to be in order. The clerk's office then prepared the assessor certificate, which the charter requires for me to sign, affixed to the role and have it quote unquote officially certified by the city assessor. That brings us to the new business of the 2021-17 resolution that's before you today. You essentially file all of those documents in the special, um, assessment role. Once that is approved, I'll sign the certificate and forward the same packet to the city clerk. And if there's any questions.
So this resolution will set the public hearing date for October 18th. And it also opens the rule for public inspection on October 8th. So tomorrow I will send out this resolution to, um, the homeowners on this rule. And also they will be notified of the public hearing on the 18th. And the rule will be available for them to stop by and look at it. So the public hearing is, um, gives them the opportunity to protest anything on the wall. And they have to do that in order to file an appeal with the tax tribunal. But if they don't show up at the public hearing, then they won't lie.
So this is an approach to, we just pass a resolution.
Yep. Yep.
I will be approved resolution 2021-12.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer, Mayor Walagora, Mayor Protem Johnson, and Councilman Mitchell.
Yes.
Vote him carried. Thank you, Alan.
Yep, thanks. No more questions? All right, have a good night.